Good afternoon and welcome to the Senior Hour, which is sponsored by Providence Holy Cross Medical Center, Hestia Med Spa, and Comfort Keepers in Home Care. I'm Barbara Cochran with my co-host.
Dr. Jean Doreo.
On your hometown station, ninety-eight point one FM and AM twelve twenty KHTS. This is a show for, about, and by seniors, giving information to enhance one's quality of life. And our first guest this morning is Sharon Duzick, who is a local realtor and is running for the Sogda School Board. Welcome. It's good to see you again.
It is good to see you. I see you all over the community.
And certainly you are too, Charlene. So this is great. This is great that you, you know, because you used to come on before in the past with Henry Mail Fitness Center. And now, you know, you've taken an extra step in terms of running for the school board, is that correct?
Yes, I just submitted, I did run for school board in the past. I have two children. I have an eight-year-old and ten-year-old. And last time, obviously, it's every four years, your particular seat, because they're in areas and districts, come up for reelection. And, you know, last time I ran, I really felt that there needed to be a parental voice on the board. And I said, if for any reason I do not win, I'm worried about not having a, somebody that can speak from a parent's experience of what's transitioning or transpiring in a school district and how it affects their child. And currently, we don't have any people on the board that have children. So I am back again.
Okay, this time you're gonna make it.
Trying to pave the way for our parents to at least have somebody that can advocate on behalf of our children from the experiences that not only I have, but my peers and fellow friends and family, so.
That could be whatever reason for.
What are the responsibilities of school board members? Let's educate our listeners.
So I think there's a lot of misconception, you know, out there. Last time I ran, you know, something that was posed was that I lacked experience in managing, you know, fiscal responsibility and budgets. The school boards do not manage the day-to-day activities. They're there to, they have one employee and their employee is a superintendent. And it really is to pose questions, facilitate from either, whether it's a parent or if it's somebody within the area, to facilitate concerns that are starting to arise and ask questions. And then advocate on behalf of them for policy to, to be implemented through the superintendent. So the superintendent is really the managing factor and our job is to manage our superintendent, if you will.
Still, you develop policy and you vote on that policy. And, and some of the policies that, that one would vote on are important for the direction of our, our schools and the teachers and the students. So not, maybe as a candidate, let us, tell us about what do you think are important issues for a school board to carry with them to improve the welfare and education of our students?
Well, I think it's, I think it's important to note that I, I think you really do need a diverse perspective on, on a school board. As I mentioned, coming from looking at a board right now and not having any parents be advocates on what's affecting their child. So like, I'm just gonna give an example for myself. You know, during the pandemic, I think it, it was really important to hear all voices of concern about what was transpiring that affected not only what you delivered in terms of curriculum, but also affected your child emotionally. And that was something that my child struggled with. That I, you know, put out in my, in my candidate statement and press release is that during the pandemic, when questions and concerns arose about how particular mandates were rolling out and how they affected the children, you know, you need to see what that final product is and how that affects them. And my, my son, my youngest, really struggled emotionally. I'm an extrovert, if you can't tell. But my, but my youngest son is an introvert. And one of the things is it does take a little bit more to communicate and forge relationships and friendships. And we had a plethora of parents that were really concerned about, you know, when they did return to school, their social distancing, when they did return to school, the masking. And there's a slew of information that said that that wasn't affecting the children. And I was looking at what the ramifications of those were. And so my son, when he returned, was coming home and calling himself names and telling me that nobody wanted to be his friend. And we forget those emotional ramifications that impacted these kids. And he was doing well and I, he has an amazing teacher at that time. And she's like, well, he's performing really high. We don't need to meet for your parent-teacher conference. And I said, no, we need to talk. And that was at the forefront of my concern because not only, you know, does that affect their, you know, social, emotional well-being and their self-esteem, which, you know, we forget that that plays into so many factors in their life. Their communication, their friendships, but also their performance. Because in the long run, eventually it does affect performance measures. And then on the flip side, you know, as a parent, looking at how curriculum was delivered during that time, I am very happy that they were trying to find a remedy. But I felt that that remedy also was not inclusive on those learners that had different learning styles. We've got our tactile learners. We've got our audio learners and our visual learners. And my oldest son, they both did well, but you could see in the performance measures, because they have aptitude tests that they take on a regular basis. You started to see the attrition because of the lack of that social, visual, and tactile learning for him. And so you just feel, or at least I felt, that this is where a parent's voice on that board could come into play and be an advocate on that behalf and say, so have we thought about these? Do we have a contingency plan in place later on? If this ever surfaces again, what do you have that you're gonna roll out with? You know, and I've struggled with the interaction, you know, when you are vocalizing stuff to parents. To like, you know, with our superintendent, there have been meetings that I've sat in and watched it just go in disarray. And I think it's very important in a leadership capacity that you understand, you listen, you try to validate somebody's concerns, even if you might not agree with them. And so that's just some of the factors that I was seeing.
And it's very important that you were able to give out that information, what you saw or what you see as a parent. It's critical. It really is.
Well, and that's where I come with, I, I think people have seen me throw out the word inclusive. And I think it really is important. Everybody comes from different walks of life, different experiences, different learning styles. And even if we don't agree with where somebody's perspective is, they still have merit because they're coming from a different place. And we just have to be able to listen to everyone in the room.
That's very true. I mean, I experienced it as the sister of a brother. I was very outgoing, very vocal, always had something to laugh about, something to talk about. And my brother was very inside himself. Very seldom would ever give his opinion. You had to almost force it out of him. And it was very sad because I don't think it helped him in life at all. It helped me, you know, because I, I've, I've always been a vocal person. And I get it from my dad. My dad was that way. My mother was very withdrawn. And it's, it's interesting how, how different kids are in a family. It really is. It's just amazing.
Well, I think that there's something beautiful about unleashing people's potential. And, and for those that, you know, know me and know the involvement that I've had, I know you have, Barbara, because I see you. And she's at every single nonprofit event and everything out here. But I serve on, I, I was recently on the board for the Wish Education Foundation. And I just kind of stepped back. I have some family things going on. So I've withdrawn a little bit, but I still sit on the board and I chaired the Alumni Committee for the College of the Canyons Foundation. I'm still very active in helping propel the board development on that side. Education and development has just been something that I truly love and have a passion about. I was a former president for the Junior Chamber for JCI, Santa Clita out here. And that's where they learn, you know, basically business and life skills through community action projects. And we did stuff for Backpacks for Kids that we brought back for the fall. We did our Santa's Helpers Event for all of our families. And it was amazing to actually even have an impact on all the districts and all the children that were, you know, in need and their families were in need during those times and help support them. But there's just something so beautiful about watching people have that aha moment, giving them the tools. And everybody has their gift. I.
And it's so, it is so appreciated. It really is. And it makes you feel so good inside when you know that, wow, I was part of helping this young man or this young woman. It really makes you feel good and know that you've done something worthwhile. It gives you such a good feeling. It really does.
Well, it's been phenomenal, like, interacting with so many of, so many wonderful women in this community. Because Barbara, I've seen you at all of the, you know, Women of the Year, Man of the Year events and hearing about the array and plethora of stuff that you've given back in the community. And a lot of those individuals that were up there were mentors of mine. And, and so I just try to perpetuate and give that to someone else. And, and so that's where education comes into play, is for people to see the beauty in who they are and what they have. Because we are all different for a reason. And I always use my quote, because I love Picasso, but the meaning of life is finding your gift and the purpose of it is giving it away. And we all have something to give this world. And I think serving on, you know, this board is really being able to focus on what education is about and it's unleashing the potential of others.
Yes, it is. And you know, it's interesting. A couple of weeks ago, Jim Ventress and I put on a Celebration of Life for our deceased friend Jamie Kennedy. She was an unbelievable volunteer in this community. She got me involved in the Boys and Girls Club Auction. She got me involved in Zanta. Come on, you're gonna join this. Come on, you know. She was insistent. But the numbers of people who were there to honor her, Jim and I were blown away. We only had about thirty responses and we figured, okay, this is gonna be very short and sweet. There were over sixty people there.
That's awesome.
And some of the most important people in this community attended. And we had, we had to put up extra tables to accommodate everyone there. And the amount of food that was brought in by different people, members of Zanta and others. And Jim and I got up and spoke a little bit about Jamie and how much she meant to us and to the club. And we asked one or two people from each table to get up and share their experiences with Jamie and what she meant to them. And it was unbelievably, it was a tearjerker. It really was. It was so wonderful because she was such an incredible lady, you know. And she, she left us too early, unfortunately. And that happens a lot.
We've, we've definitely lost a lot of really key people in this community that have done and left their mark on individuals.
Yes, we have. And it's been too many, in my opinion, you know.
From Jamie to Sherri Fleming to, I was just telling someone about a story with Sherri and when I was a college student trying to raise money for families that were in need through their New Horizons program, without even asking, knowing who I was, even paperwork. She was like, I'll give you money to do that. And I was like, you don't even know, you don't even know who I am.
No, that was Sherri though.
I know.
That was Sherri. She loved this community absolutely.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, it did. And the time is up. Where did the time go?
Oh, it's, they're kicking us off. Very, very honored and very blessed to be on here today and thank you.
I'm so glad. I'm so glad you were here. It was so good to see you again. And you better come back and see us, Charlene.
That's right.
And good luck.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Charlene. You're always welcome back on the show. We appreciate you so much and we know that as you learn from mentors, you will, you are already a mentor now. So we thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yes. I'm Barbara Cochran with my co-host, Dr. Jean Doreo, on your hometown station, ninety-eight point one FM, AM twelve twenty KHTS. Welcome back to the Senior Hour. I'm Barbara Cochran with my co-host, Dr. Jean Doreo, on your hometown station, ninety-eight point one FM, AM twelve twenty KHTS. And our guests now are from the Paseo Club. Cezanne Yamazo, Yamazo, you're the fitness director. And Jennifer Azavito, you're the general manager and instructor.
Yes.
Phew. I stumbled a bit, but I got it.
We got it, right.
Don't ask me to say it again, though. So what's happening at the Paseo Club and what do both of you do? One at a time, unless you want to both jumble together.
Hopefully not, no. Hopefully we won't step all over each other. So I'm Jen. I'm the general manager of the club. I'm also a tennis instructor, a pickleball instructor, and a fitness instructor.
Wow.
So I kind of cover everything in the club. Cezanne is our fitness director, so she is really the head honcho boss lady for all things fitness. And I would say for Paseo, you know, two of the, two of the biggest things that we look to help are, you know, our families in the community and our seniors. So our seniors being such a big component of the club, you know, we definitely have programming and events and things that are, that are geared toward our seniors.
Now, where are you located?
We are located across from Valencia High School on the corner of Smythe and Dickerson, just right by the old ice station, the cube.
The cube. And do you have just one fitness center up here?
Yes, just one location.
I'm amazed you don't have more than one.
No, but it's pretty big. So our one location is about eight acres. We've got twelve tennis courts and eleven pickleball courts, a junior Olympic-sized pool, a three-story gym where Cezanne lives.
Do you have a single bed or a double bed or a king-size?
Right, a Pilates reformer bed.
So what do you do?
I am the fitness director. I am also an instructor and I teach Pilates reformer at the club as well.
Pilates reform?
Reformer. It's a type of Pilates. There's several different Pilates classes that we add. One is Pilates mat. And that is the use of equipment of just a mat, a ring, balls, and bands. And then we have classes that are on machines called Pilates reformers. And at our studio, we have the Allegro Two reformers. And we use different equipment, boxes and jump boards, rings, bands, balls on those devices as well.
Well, now, where did Pilates come from? Where did it originate?
It originated from a man named Joseph Pilates. Originally, it was called controllogy. He originated it during World War II where he was caring for victims of war who had lost limbs in hospitals in Germany. And he was getting people back to health, back to being able to sit up, use the restroom. And he, he started using different springs and different rings and things to get people healthy and moving again as a physical therapy.
Oh, interesting.
He then was put in prison camp in the Isle of Man where he, while he was there, he developed even more Pilates moves and different things to help people. And then finally, he landed in New York City where he was in the same building as the New York Ballet. And then he started to work with injured ballet dancers. And that's where he became up with his Pilates reformer machine there.
Wow, how interesting. What an interesting life.
Yep.
How did it get to be called controllogy?
Because in the beginning, controllogy, it was about controlling your body.
Oh, that's it.
And so it was control. So controllogy is where it came from. So until his death, unfortunately, he had a horrific death. He died in a fire in his studio. But his wife was a survivor and his students. And each student that he had, he would do like a series for the specific person and their injuries. And he would call it the Martha Series or whichever student. They went on and they changed the name from controllogy to Pilates to honor his name, Joseph Pilates.
Oh, cool.
Wow, that's really interesting. Really, really interesting. Now, is this.
So Jen, tell, tell, tell me a little bit about pickleball. I know that, you know, it's kind of a hit across country, but, you know, as seniors, you know, we, you know, have to maintain our mobility and our balance. How does pickleball help with that?
So pickleball, like you said, is the fastest-growing sport in the country, has been for the last two years. Both tennis and pickleball obviously got a little bit of a boon through the pandemic because it was something you could do with friends without being in super close contact and still getting to be social. But pickleball traditionally, I mean, it's been around since nineteen sixty-three, although it's only come into popularity recently. It is, it was thought to be something for aging tennis players to do. Because the court is smaller and the paddle is lighter and the wiffle ball is less weight than a tennis ball and less heft and less pain if it hits you and, you know, all these good things. And so a lot of the thought process in the beginning of pickleball was that it was a great thing for, for seniors to play because you didn't have to move quite as much. Now, for us at the club, the great thing is that we definitely have a huge pickleball population. I mean, it gets bigger every day. And all ages are playing. But in using the gym facilities and having so many of our trainers also be players now, is that we get to use the functionality and kind of combine that so that people understand, you know, okay, I may play a ton of pickleball and I'm having a good time, but I also need some functional fitness to make sure that I'm staying healthy.
Functional fitness.
Functional fitness is a big, a big term for us, definitely.
What does that mean?
It's the ability to keep on doing all the things you need to do, you know? If I'm functionally fit, it's not necessarily about, you know, the way my pants fit or the way I look in a bathing suit, but it's my ability to be functional. It's the fact that at forty or fifty or sixty or seventy, I can still get the top glass from the drawer. Or I can still reach around the back to get my purse out of the backseat of the car without, without injuring myself. And that, that tends to be a reality for seniors, you know? We, we find pretty funny ways to get hurt because we are not functionally fit. And so a lot of, definitely a lot of the classes we teach, Pilates being a great example of that, but just functionally fit classes are ways for us to, to combat that.
Well, I guess I'm functionally fit then because I can reach behind me in the car and pick up my purse.
It's important.
Yes, it is, when you stop and think about it. And I'm in my eighties.
Exactly.
So, wow, that's good to hear.
Part of functional fitness is mobility and making sure that you're mobile. Just getting up off of the couch, getting out of bed, those are functional things that we have to do every day. And adding rotation and different things with weighted rotation helps you to be able to swing your groceries onto the counter. Different things and different movement patterns that mimic things that we do in everyday life.
Well, I guess I'm extremely lucky then because I can do all of those things.
You're very lucky.
And I sit in a, in a chair that goes back into a bed, you know? And it's very, very comfortable. And I have to force myself to get up out of that chair every ten or fifteen minutes because it would be so easy for me to just, oh, you know, put my drink of water here or my glass of wine or whatever I'm having. Oh, I'll just sit here. And, and I, I know in my mind, you cannot sit here for any length of time. You have to get up and walk. And I will. I'll get up and walk around, you know, in a circle in my house, down the hallway. And either that or I'll get on the bike that's in another room and get on there and pedal, you know? And I, I've learned that sitting for any length of time is not good for me. It really isn't.
Yeah, it's not for any of us.
I have a heck of a time getting out of the chair if I sit in it for even an hour or so. And that's so easy to do. You sit down and watch a TV show and whoops, an hour is gone. And then you start a second hour. Wait a minute, I've got to get up.
Movement is necessary.
It really is. And I guess I'm, I'm very fortunate that I'm still quite active and walking and moving around.
Well, I think it's the mindset. It's important that you have that mindset.
We talked on this show quite a bit about core strength.
Yes.
And how, how important that is for our mobility and our balance for seniors. And I, I'm sure at the Paseo Club that you guys are emphasizing this part of fitness and exercise.
Absolutely.
Well, it, it takes a lot of energy to get up out of the chair, you know? And that, that uses the court. It really does.
Yes.
Because otherwise, I'd just slip out. Then I'd think, uh-oh, how am I gonna get up now?
We have new problems.
Yes. But I, I have, I do get down on my hands and knees and get myself up.
Those are also very important things to.
Yes, without having to hold on to something to, to help me get up. And it's, it's getting harder to do. I guess the older I get, you know, things are a lot harder to do. But at least I'm able to do them. It's slowed down a bit, but I'm able to do them.
It's important.
Yeah, it is. And my, my daughter tells me, Mom, I hope I'm as active as you are when I'm your age. And she's sixty-two now.
Nice. That's good.
So, but yeah, movement is very important. It really is. Even though I'd love to just sit there and sit and sit and sit, you know?
You're not alone.
No, no. And fortunately, I'm able to get up and move around. I'm so thankful for that. I really am. And go up and down the stairs, you know? That's very important too. Because I, I had, I fell once going up, and I have two steps going up to my front door. And I had a bag of groceries in one hand and I had nothing to hold on to. And I tripped and banged against the door. And there's a result of it because it just tore my face to pieces because I hit the door. My granddaughter was there and she heard me and she came running out and blood was pouring out of me. And she said, nanny, hospital, hospital.
That's why balance is so important for seniors.
Yes, it really is. It's critical.
It is. It's strength, balance, being able to pick your feet up onto the step, to get onto the step while you're holding heavy objects is very important.
And that's why my son had two handles put on my front steps. One on this side and one on this side. And I use them every single time now. I, I do not want to trip and fall into that door again because that was unbelievably painful. It's not gonna happen again. It hasn't happened since then because I hold on to that and I only carry one bag and hold on to the handles that he put in. But it really helps. It really does. And I think we need to take a break, don't we? Yes. We'll be back in a few minutes. I'm Barbara Cochran with my co-host, Dr. Jean Doreo, on your hometown station, ninety-eight point one FM, AM twelve twenty KHTS. Welcome back to the Senior Hour. I'm Barbara Cochran with my co-host, Dr. Jean Doreo, on your hometown station, ninety-eight point one FM, AM twelve twenty KHTS. And we're speaking to Cezanne Yamazo and Jennifer Azavito. I did it right, didn't I? Amazing. And we were talking about something during the break and I'd forgotten what it was, but you were gonna talk about it.
So we were talking about what we do with our new members and our starter program. So there are a lot of people, you know, they see it on the news now and they hear about pickleball and, you know, something new and exciting. And they're curious about it, but it's not always the easiest to start. A lot of, you know, recreational areas like the park, you have people that have been going there and they feel comfortable there and it's a little difficult to break in. So one of the things that we've started doing is to offer free starter programs for new members where they have the opportunity to take some lessons with some of our instructors. So you meet a couple of the pros, you get to meet some other people that are also in that same beginner scenario. So you've got some built-in partners as you learn the foundations of the game and how to play and how to keep score. I would say the scoring is probably the hardest thing, but.
Interesting.
So then you have a chance to learn all of that and then start to take part in our normal programming.
Wow, is that, is that the case for all of the games, well, games, exercise programs? You do the same thing?
Yes, yeah, we do.
Starter program?
Yes, we do. So starter programs are available for tennis and pickleball. And then Cezanne and her team run a great assessment program.
We do. We do a new member workout session where we take people through the machines and teach them how to use the equipment. We also have an introductory to Pilates. We also have an introductory to Pilates class that we offer for people that are interested in Pilates reformer as well.
Now, how did you both get involved in doing this kind of thing?
I played tennis my whole life. I played tennis in college and did the whole, whole thing and then started teaching. And then started to, I always enjoyed working out, so became a group exercise instructor. And so I, I kind of came from the ground up and became the tennis director at the club and then the sport director and now, now the general manager.
Oh.
Oh. And?
I was an awkward overweight teenager that got a job at a gym and started to take group exercise classes. At the time they were called aerobics.
Oh, yes.
And found that that was where I shined, not necessarily in sports. I didn't play sports very well, but I was great at dance and aerobics. And so it became my passion in my life. And I went to school and got a degree in exercise physiology and kinesiology.
Oh, cool.
Wow, that's interesting.
Good for you.
Now, did your mother ever get involved in it?
No, not at all. My mother thinks I was adopted. She doesn't understand why I exercise. Um, she, no, she's an avid tennis watcher. She loves to watch tennis, but-
And she's British, by the way.
Yes, she's British. She's from Yorkshire, but she does not exercise, except for walking dogs. She does pet sit and do that.
Well, that's good exercise, walking is.
Yes, it is.
Especially if you have two or three dogs that you're trying to control.
Right.
Because most of the time they want to go, go, go.
Absolutely. And speaking of which, at the Paseo Club, we have a walking group that meets two days a week.
Oh, good.
That's nice.
So that's wonderful exercise option for our seniors as well.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I walk. I, um, I live across from, uh, Friendly Valley and, uh, we have lots of hills.
Yeah, it's perfect.
Oh, and I, I have to head out that way and I go up that hill and here, and then down that hill and up another hill, down another one, and finally I get home. And I'm thinking, oh.
That's great, though.
It's exhausting. It really is.
Well, but it gets you out in nature. It's good for the mind as well.
Yes.
It's good for your endorphins.
The only thing, the only thing I don't like about it is people walk their dogs. And they do not leave the sidewalk. There's no way I'm going to walk close to that dog because I've seen the dogs yap, 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 yap. I'm the one who has to go out in the street and that I don't appreciate.
That seems a little rude.
It really does. Especially when you've got a couple who are walking two or three dogs, you know? No, they're just walking on that sidewalk. They see you walking. Oh, no, you go in the street. And that, that to me is, is, that's unconscionable. It really is because it shouldn't be that way.
A little etiquette.
True.